Welcome everyone to the last Mount Mansfield School Board meeting of the school year. Today's June 12, 2023. I'm the granting board chair. Thank you everybody for being here. Just going to do a quick review of the agenda to get started and then we will do my missing. Okay, and then we'll do roll call. And see if we need to make any changes. So. Community comments, we will start there and then Todd will give us the principal report from Jericho Elementary School. Some of us just had a tour, which was lovely. We will approve the student drug and alcohol policy that was warned at a previous meeting. We have two new policies to warn the fire and emergency preparedness drills policy and the access, control and visitor management policy. Then we have a seconded motion from finance facilities committee. To approve a capital transfer and also the tax anticipation note. We have a principal report that Andrew is gonna provide for. Yeah. Sorry Superintendent. Said, said, read one word, said a different word. We have minutes from our last meeting to approve some committee reports and charters to approve. If they have not yet been approved. And we'll talk about the V S D A resolution process. And then we have the board calendar finalized ish. It can always change, but the dates are finalized on here. And just a quick chat about the Jericho open board position, any other business and insurance? Anybody have any modifications, changes, updates to the agenda? For a very packed agenda. I'm not seeing any.
We take the tax anticipation off because I think we concluded that.
Right, I think that's what we found out in the charter, but is it the board doesn't have to, the treaty just. Okay, so the tax anticipation, we don't need to approve, we just will be notifying. That, okay, so that's a change. Thank you. Okay, great. Anything else? Could you run us through a roll call, please?
Certainly. Tara Arneson. Kevin Campbell.
Here.
Heather Chadwick.
Here.
Tom Cheney. Allison Conant.
Here.
Gail Conley.
It's, it's Gail's 58th wedding anniversary tonight, and so he is today with his bride, so.
Edie Greening.
I'm here.
Eric Gildemeister. Diane Kirsten Glipman. Ethan Murray.
Yeah.
Stuart Morijo. Katie Nelson.
Here.
Lisa Pollak.
Here.
Andrew Pond.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I didn't have a fun question for everyone, sorry.
Well, they were, they were supposed to expose everybody's.
I don't know. I don't think that's a smart one. Community comments, like some folks are here. I don't see anybody on the line. So community comments. We limit, limited to no more than five minutes per person. We request that you clearly state your name and your place of residence and the topic of your comment. School board will take no action. Items raised during community comments and dialogue exchanges will be for clarification purposes. Um, so.
Hi, everyone. My name is Guthrie Hartzfield. I'm a resident of Richmond's and I'm here to talk about All Together Now, which is a youth organization. I mean, I'm a graduate from the class of 2019 and I recently graduated from college and became the new program manager for All Together Now. As you are all probably aware, Chittenden East Town is one of the few remaining areas in the state with no local prevention coalition. Students in this area struggle with substance misuse just as much as youth in other parts of the state that sometimes more. Research also shows that there is a symbiotic relationship between mental health struggles and substance use. Since 2016, a group of community members, partner organizations, such as United Way, Department of Health, WISE BT, Vermont After School, Community Senior Center of Fulton, Richmond and Huntington, UDM School of Nursing and UVM Extension, have been working together to try and find a way to bring a local prevention coalition to this area. The MMU USD administration has been very supportive throughout this process. We are very appreciative of this. We're generous funding from the United Way Prevention Center of Excellence and C-Money from the town of Richmond. They're on the cusp of finally forming a prevention coalition. All Together Now is a youth and community design fellowship that aims to elevate youth voice and create change through compassion for equitable mental health and well-being opportunities. Our primary focuses are empowering youth to be the voice of change, using mental health improvement as a pathway to reduce substance misuse. And reducing suicidality. We focus on disconnected youth by connecting all and recognize the socioeconomic, socio-political, and marginalized groups in the MMU USD population. We believe youth have the best ideas to make real change and have been working with several interns from the MMU USD community in order to achieve this. We are data-driven and community-based. We have a partnership with MMU USD in process. Our focus is on 12 to 20-year-olds, but not elementary school students. Most importantly, our target audience is youth and not parents or families. We wanted to take this time to make you aware of our efforts and thank you for the support. It is often not easy to catch the attention of funders and legislators being on the edge of Chittenden County. Life, the youth, and rural Chittenden County are incredibly important. Thank you for reviewing the substance use policy. All Together Now is dedicated to the well-being of students. We support this school board for providing a prevention layer, the district's approach to combating substances. All Together Now has made some comments on the policy that we submitted via email to the board. We look forward to working together in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Bea Enray. I'm a resident of Essex Junction, Vermont.
Okay, so before you speak, is the board comfortable with having a not resident share community comments? Is there any precedent? Is there any precedent? We generally don't. We generally have residents only. If this is about the, the. Right, the nature of the topic.
Okay, it's in discussion about the UDM School of Nursing partnership with All Together Now, just to provide some context about how we work with community.
So yeah, that seems reasonable.
Hello, my name is Bea Enray. I am a public health nurse and I work in Chittenden County, so I work up in this territory quite a bit. I'm also teaching faculty at UDM where I teach public health nursing at the graduate and undergraduate level. In light of the policy that you're discussing tonight, my goal is to provide background about what All Together Now is doing to promote well-being for students in this district, as well as to discuss opportunities for future partnership with All Together Now and the school district to support students by providing substance-free outlets. There is an intrinsic link between substance use and mental health needs, hosting a conversation on substance use policies, prime time to discuss ways to support an individual as a whole, as the choices we make now as community members. Set the youth of our communities up for success. Providing mental health intervention at such a sensitive period of development, it provides someone's support they need to live a better life, a better life now, and also into adult. UDM's College of Nursing has partnered with All Together Now for the last year to identify the needs of youth in this community and survey interest and engagement in proposed interventions that serve as alternatives to substance use. Our undergraduates do this recently designed and performed a community health survey in direct collaboration with MMU HS students. This survey reported that one in three high school students identified a need for increased mental health information and resources. There is a need for mental health support, not just at the school environment, but also in their community as well. Also on this survey, Mount Mansfield students have offered activities they want to participate in, like a youth-run TV channel, newspaper, internship opportunities, and increased opportunities for fitness. These suggestions may provide a student the option to pursue a hobby rather than a substance. We found that our partnership with All Together Now has encouraged students to pursue careers specializing in mental health and public health. And we hope that engaging with high schoolers via All Together Now can support interest in the field of nursing that Mount Mansfield students may have. Yet another way we can support the Mont's adolescent community with this valuable partnership. Community engagement with the underlying goal to promote holistic wellness is a mental health intervention. And All Together Now has outlined potential ways that we can support the youth in our community and empower them to pursue engagement away from substance use. We can support the implementation of the goal of this policy by providing alternatives to substance use, offering community at a critical point between the development and empowering youth to make choices about what they want their community to look like. We are united in the goal to raise individuals who are not only aware of how to safeguard their health, but also ways of their mental health to be supported in the community and how they could be an active member in their community. More information on All Together Now can be found on the town of Richmond website or by emailing the organization directly at projectalltogetherenow@gmail.com. Happy to answer questions and have an active community and we're eager to support mental health in our communities through our partnerships. Thank you for listening. Thank you for your time.
Do you have community comments?
No, okay.
Can I ask you? A question. When you mentioned the policy that we're discussing tonight, which one were you referring?
The substance use and front policy.
Can I ask one too? Guthrie, you sent you an email, the words into questions? You sent you an email.
There's no reason to.
No.
Okay, I'll check on that and make sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I was looking forward as well. I just didn't want to be left off.
I'm looking.
All right, we're gonna do a shift now.
We just said thank you. Just say before we move on, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. And all the work that has been done for the last seven, eight years. Um, Todd. Yes.
Bring in community knowledge, but.
Of course, sorry.
So the problem sitting next to you is not in your line of vision. As Kevin knows, I have a daughter at Campbell's Hump who plays softball. And uh, just something to maybe put in the facilities bucket. There's some seemingly high-risk things going on. The fencing, the backstop at Campbell's Hump for both the boys and the girls are inadequate. The sidelines are extremely low and I had to talk with coaches and the students about not standing up. Because they can literally stand up on the backstop and a foul ball is just waiting to happen. It's also not long. And so the bench is not behind the fencing.
So, so as a parent, have you talked to the principal of this school?
No, because I feel like this is a capital improvement, not necessarily a school budget. Because I'm, I'm, I'm going from the perspective of equity in our schools and our middle schools, the difference is significant. Also, there is a blank path that runs around the whole school and there is no place. For fans to sit. So I think as like, when you look at the difference between Brown River and Campbell's Hump as a facilities investment, this is not, this should not be a principal's issue. This should be the facility department of the district. There's no athletic director, as far as I understand, that supports the middle schools. There's only the athletic director at the high school and so. Activities director. So there's no contact point for the middle school piece around that as far as I know. So that, again, putting in the facilities budget, I think I will certainly talk with Ms. Neeler. But.
I think that's step one.
I, I think it has to go into planning it is not an inexpensive. Like, so I don't think, would I go to Mr. Weston if there was something that I felt was important about the auditorium? Or would I go to Mr. Marlowe?
Mr. Weston. Let me start with the principal. Ethan, can I just coordinate with you when you have that conversation?
Sure.
My family has like the whole basketball situation feels like that needs some intervention. I'd love to support you in that conversation. That's right. Yeah.
It's almost majority. We take some action tonight. So remind, it's very public comment. There will be no, let alone comments. I was working on saying, five eyes is the same thing. When, when the board brings forward community comments or, you know, that's fine, but I think we still should be. You know, working under the rules of engagement for community comments, so we don't take up an item that's not worn as a board. So it's good for you to raise it.
Yep.
Just like anyone else can raise it, but it should be met with a thank you. For bringing that to our attention type of response during that time. If it's something that a board member wants to discuss with a boarder, then we talk to the chair about getting it.
Yes, and I'm, I'm, I mean. It's important to me, but I'm bringing that comment from people other than myself or not. And thanks, Pat, for the, well, we know that she's retiring, so I don't know how long she's still in that role and maybe a good.
July 1, catch her now. She's 30. Um, yeah, and, and I mean truly, but just practicing for everyone, this kind of an issue, you know, please take up with the principal first. It wouldn't come to the board as an issue. From, from a community member, right? So that's.
Sure could. It could.
Sure, but the board wouldn't take action on it.
Right, wasn't asking for action.
I was joking if no one caught that. I've been here a long enough to know.
You're.
Why? Sure.
Should I make sure nobody else's community comments at that? Okay.
So I'm Todd Broly, principal here at Jericho. And I'm just gonna talk a little bit about J E S, the fantastic school it is. So three hundred. This is my first year here. I'm coming from a much smaller school up in the kingdom, Coventry Village School. And so it's been, yeah, about two and a half times bigger here, but that was pre-K through eight. You know, three-year-olds through 14-year-olds, so it's nice to have a narrower lens, a lot more moving parts, but a narrow lens. We were a one-school district up there, so I was, I did board meetings every month. It feels nice to be here. We have 316 kids when I did the principal's report. And not a huge amount of fluctuation, you know, through the year. Some move in, some move out, but roughly that all year. And making us the biggest of our, of our K4 schools. Richmond's very close when you include the preschool that they house in there. We don't have a preschool in here. We don't have room for that. But yeah, so it's, it's, it's a good-sized school. One of the things I tried to do when I, I started this school is just get a sense of where does my energy, where do we as a school, need to put our energy to see what is it? And the good news is, I've been doing a lot of listening, a lot of soliciting of information this past year, and it matches what the district priorities are. On looking at, you know, I would have been doing the same thing of implementing PLCs, which I'll talk a little bit about. And, you know, working on our MTSS, working on, the biggest one is working on our sense of community. It was just a year or so before COVID that we merged with some of the UID kids. And, and about a year before that, that we started Spanish immersion. And then, you know, COVID came and it's been hard to build a sense of community is what I picked up in the school. And that's one of my favorite things, so it works that well. So we've been working on, on trying to build that. I really actually think that pedagogically, that if, if children don't feel like they belong here, they don't feel like it's their school, if staff doesn't feel like they belong and are a vital piece of the community, it's not gonna be as effective anyway. So there's a reason I'm, I'm, I'm working hard on, on the sense of community. But it's, it's a fun place to do work. We, I changed how we do morning announcements. It's not just over the PA. It's, I play a song, kids put in requests in a song box. And I play a song over the PA and that signals for teachers to get on Google meets. And so then they can all see all the other classes projected up on the board. And then we do, you know, the what date and a goofy holiday and the lunches and any announcements. And then we've started doing Cheetah Cheer, so just as were the cheetahs, a shout out to, to different people and groups. And then end it with a joke from, from kids. And so it's just a fun little, you know, it's a nice vibrant way to start the morning, especially with the songs. We love that. Getting to see all the kids dancing as it plays for about a minute, minute and a half. And then, and, and the joke and everything, but you get to see everybody on there. So that, that's one. We're bringing back school assemblies, which has been great. We have done those through COVID. And again, you know, that, that shift in just a big shift in numbers from 250 or something before the merger with UID to, to now 315 is, is a, is a lot. And so, you know, just getting used to doing things differently there. So we're bringing that back. We've been doing it as different grades host, like a giant morning meeting. And so that's been really fun. And yeah, so that's been, that's been a big focus. There's a lot to, to keep working on that. On Spanish immersion, mentioning during the tour, is a little bit like a school within a school. And so we've been working on that and that sort of ties into one of the other pieces. I mean, I won't go through the whole thing. But another piece I really want to highlight is our work on professional learning communities. So that's a district initiative and, and one I'm a giant fan of. Research shows it's really one of the biggest bang for your bucks in terms of student gains is, is high-functioning PLCs. I'm coming from a school with, depending on where you looked in the building, it wasn't uniform, but we were working on it. But with some really high-functioning PLCs. And so I, I, I'm coming in as a big fan. So that would have been something that I would have been, you know, maybe not implementing this year, but for sure next year. So I was glad that the district was working on that. We have seen some nice gains through that. Depending on, you know, again, not all even, but every grade has a PLC. And there's three to four classes, including Spanish immersion per grade. And some of them have really just taken to it like a fish to water and we've seen really dramatic gains. Like in one grade, a lot of kids came in not at proficiency. And they're, they, they really raised a number of kids a grade level or two. Based on doing that as a grade level and through the vehicle of the PLCs. One of the pieces that was revealed that again, I mentioned, Spanish immersion was kind of a school within a school and felt pretty separate and COVID didn't help with that. PLCs I see as a way to bring them back into the fold. Hasn't been a smooth transition there, but we're gonna keep working on it. Because, you know, and Andrew and I have had long conversations about this, when, you know, like our new reading and writing benchmarks. Those are the benchmarks, whether you're in English or Spanish. And so teachers, you know, once, we need to get our curriculum. What we're teaching and, and when we're teaching a little bit more in alignment. And then it doesn't matter whether you're English or Spanish, but as a, you know, third grade team, we can meet, talk about the results on this, compare notes. Oh my God, the results you're getting are so different than mine. What are you doing differently? And learn from each other and help all students learn. So I think it's a, it's a fabulous vehicle for student growth and for building community. So that's, that's the lens I've been coming at it with. And then the last piece is just the community engagement and, and, and working out and with families. And so it's been, you know, we've been bringing people back in, seeing mystery readers, you know, all the time in the school has been awesome. Parents love coming in for that, grandparents. And, and then being back out in the community with field trips and everything has been great. I mentioned, you know, the farm to school. We fundraised and were able to locally source our beef for all of Maine, not within the district, it was pointed out. But, 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 you know, we, we were able to locally source our feed. So there's a lot of really neat stuff going on. It's a, it's an amazing community, Jericho itself and then the, the school community here. The kids are fantastic. The staff is dedicated and talented. It's just, it's been a great first year.
Questions?
How natural have you been doing Spanish immersion?
This would be, we're just finishing the sixth year. Last year was the first year that went fully through the K4. And so now we have the first group finished out their fifth grade year. And, and Brown River does just a little bit of the grade. So there is some there.
From where they started.
Yeah, so we offered, it's just a part of their day, but yeah, it's still, it's still part of it. And the hope is to have that at Campbell's Hump when those kids reach fifth grade.
Kind of like a transition into, you know, back to normal, right?
Yeah, it's a good way to put it. Great question.
Do you know how those kids are doing this year? I mean, that would probably be a Brown River question.
Well, I do, we do have feelings with them, but yeah, it's, it's been good. There's room for room. One of the pieces like Andrew and I and Jeremy and, you know, sometimes Kevin is the principal of Brown River. And then the, the co-directors of the program, we've been meeting quarterly or something. And I think that was new this year and that's been helpful, but we need to bring the middle school a little bit more into the fold, so they feel a little more cohesive part of the program.
And you doing preparing here with immersion kids, preparing them to go to the middle school where there is gonna be less Spanish and more.
So we have, we have a, a program where they're, they're almost entirely Spanish K1, 2. And then third and fourth grade. It becomes a blend of English and Spanish. So they, they, yeah, they're learning more reading in English in third grade. Later than would be, but what research shows if you can read in one language, you'll pick it up in a second language. So that they're learning primarily the first time around in Spanish.
So a question maybe for you or for Andrew, both, but you kind of mentioned that are, there is good growth opportunities. We're still learning, you know, still early in the sixth year. When you think about what those opportunities are, what are, what are a couple of things that bubble up that we could continue to work on?
Oh, you mean for, by, by opportunities for kids or for the program itself? Because like the research of like, what you get out of it, you know, the, the, the brain development being raised bilingual, you're, you know, the, the research is clear. Like you're more creative, you're, you're, you're dynamic, a thinker, you're, I mean, yeah, there's a lot. For our school, you know, everybody gets Spanish in one of their specials and then these kids are getting more in-depth. It, it brings a flavor. I, I've worked at a number of Vermont schools, Williamsburg, Coventry. And it brings a different flavor to this, this school than I've seen anywhere else. We have a cultural diversity within the building, because, what do I have? Four more of our Spanish immersion staff are native speakers from other countries. And so it, it, there's. There's a wealth there that, that, you know, of, of different opportunities just within that, that is, is amazing. You know, and so the cultural exposure is great, but all kids get that with that Spanish world language special that focuses on just a smattering of Spanish and then a lot of culture around, around the world, especially from Latin world. We're working right now on trying to get dual language across the building, because if we're gonna be, you know, have Spanish immersion, everybody gets Spanish. I feel like, well, then all our signage should be dual language. That is more work than you would expect. Especially since I don't speak Spanish, but I've been working on it this year. But yeah, so, you know, it, it just, and it's brought about an awareness for all our kids, but especially the kids in the program. But for all our kids of, of language and, and cultures and differences that I think is really valuable and hard to put, you know, finger on. Do you want anything?
No, not really. I think you're, you're spot on. I think one of the areas that we're really trying to look for more opportunities is around staffing and connections to other outside organizations or things like that. So we're just continuing to explore those options.
Staffing is a little bit of an issue. Not as many Spanish-speaking teachers in Vermont as you might think.
There's a lot of Spanish speakers. I'll just do that too.
In Vermont, and teachers?
Straight up speakers.
Yeah, well, okay. Yeah, I, I need licensed teachers. Yeah, right.
Andrew, you're, you've got a siren in your background. We're hearing it through our speakers here.
Oh, I, well, I wanted to ask a question, so I unmuted. It's a complete, completely different topic of conversation. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the facilities tour, but I was just wondering if you could make a comment about the facilities. You mentioned earlier that you didn't have room for preschool. Or enough preschool in that building. And I'm also wondering if any board members, if anything stood out when you were able to go on the tour.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's, it's a good building. Part, half of it was built in 57 and half in 91. And it's really well-maintained. Our facilities manager does an amazing job. And it's really well maintained. Our facilities manager does an amazing job. You know, fifty seven is not real new at this point, but I I think it works great because of the upkeep and the and the maintenance that's done. Yeah, the space issue is a little bit tricky, especially for office spaces. You know, older schools were not built with modern. I mean, this is what I ran into at Coventry with modern education in mind, with different people needing small group spaces or office spaces or whatnot. We have somebody from the central office coming over here to base out of here and we'll we'll find him a space, but it it won't be the most luxurious space. And so that that becomes a little bit of an issue, but nothing pressing. You know, when I gave the tour, our our cafeteria, you know, with third grade as our big grade gets crowded. But it's doable. It's all doable. It's not anywhere near the max. It just is, you know, a little bit loud. And we're working on that with acoustic tiles and behavior. So, yeah. Yeah, anything stand out to the folks on the tour?
They have a stage, Andrew. They have a stage.
That huge gym.
Well, the bold smiley stage, so Andrew's probably not that impressed. I think what I've noticed with kids that have gone through Richmond Elementary, this is much, it feels much larger than the elementary's.
It's a sprawling nature on the show, sure. It's why?
The ceilings and just the hallway.
I love that. Yeah.
More spacious.
Yeah, you're right. The we the hallways at Richmond, they are, I didn't, yeah.
They're very, and I didn't actually get to talk to you about this, but it speaks to what Andrew was saying, and it may have been mentioned on the tour. But it goes back to the like the outdoor facilities, like my kiddo plays football and every practice is here. And so we call it sports because we can come here and play all the sports while he's doing football. The tennis courts and the basketball court. And so I was just wondering. That does seem like in sort of a big difference between some of the other elementary schools that I've visited. And I I'm curious of how why that is or how that came to be. Is it through the town? We may be able to speak to this too, or you answer.
I mean, yeah, it's just sort of evolved. I the the tennis courts are are managed by our activities department, you know. Not the town, as well as the fields. It it does create a little bit of an of an interesting thing in that we've got an open campus that the community uses. And in twenty twenty three, that's trickier. I mean, because we're, you know, Richmond Elementary, others, you know, Smiley especially is like its own little spot. Here we've got, you know, suburb, which makes it great for kids to walk right to right to school. But a lot of people use the walking trail, you know, when people are out for recess and somebody's walking through the playground. You know, we've asked them to call me and I go out and talk to, you know, random people like, not the best time to cut through. Can you walk your dog another time? You know, and stuff so it it but but it is, it's an amazing resource for the town and 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 the community for sure. I don't know the history, though.
Yeah, I don't know that I know the street either.
It's a high school, isn't it?
But this building was a high school.
No, I don't think so. I I'm not sure, but there was the the spot in Jericho Center. And then this wing that ran was built in fifty seven and they were both, you know, I don't know how high they went. But they were both at least elementary and above, but I I could be wrong on that, so.
Just to so, I guess, I don't know where the high school was before the original union.
At the community center in Jericho. We'll have to do some research. Tara had a question and then.
I was just hoping you could talk a little bit about the Hagerty program. They're using kindergarten, knowing like that literacy and phonics is a pretty hot topic.
It is.
And how it's gone through your day, but something you can implement across grades one to four, too.
You you wouldn't do Hagerty grades one to four. So this was actually, this is I my background, I was a middle school science teacher, but I got deep into the into the early literacy world in Coventry. And so we were making this shift a little the last couple of years. And so I we implemented Hagerty there with great. So I was pretty psyched that this district was looking into it and that we were able to do it here. It gives that foundation. You can't do it up to second grade unless you're backfilling with kids that maybe are are skills lacking. You wouldn't do it above that. But we we, you know, we we need to establish that solid awareness of what they call phonemic awareness of the sound and letter relationship. And Hagerty is this like, for those that don't know, five to ten minute a day piece that is really easy for teachers to implement, so it doesn't take a lot of money and time to train people. You can do it. It's right there. Kids find it engaging, but it's short. And so you can walk in to our our classrooms and see them, you know, talk about, let's say boat. And then they 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 associate, you've got this movement that they're doing with it and and breaking up the the different sounds. So not as much the syllables as like when we learn, or at least Marie, but but the the specific sounds. And and that, what, you know, like you said, the hot topic is what we're realizing a lot of kiddos were missing, you know, in the reading wars. That 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 they were missing on on on, you know, really, when they when they see a word, being able to sound it out and not, you know, take a context clue and guess it. And it's, yeah, I I think it's great. We we saw differences within a year in Coventry in doing similar work. So I'm I'm really optimistic of the work we're trying to do as a district here. We've got a solid, what they, you know, word study is is phonemic awareness and more. And we've now got a a solid scope and sequence, including Hagerty for for word study for the K four. And so that'll that'll make a big difference.
Into the other elementary schools using this?
Next year.
I mean, some may, right? And some may already, but we're doing that across the district. Great question.
Thank you. Kevin?
Thanks for hosting us. Nice report. I think you've come up to speed pretty quickly based on, other than knowing the history of the nineteen.
I'll work on it next time.
I don't think we've been able to stump you yet, so I'll try. Is there, after a year and you've been around, your background, you've been around through a couple of different S U's. So is there anything you wanted to share that you've seen something that we might you know, opportunities for improvement as a broader district?
Fascinating.
School or anything you want to note that's remarkable in one way or another?
Yeah, yeah, a couple of things come to mind. It it's, you know, not having been in a in a multi-district school, you know, multi-school district rather. You know, I was in a S U in all the others, but they were independent school districts. It's nice to see the teamwork and synergy, to use my nineties term, across, you know, schools and admin and 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 the central office. You know, some of the other principals and I, we and Andrew, I've had conversations on how we can, you know, merge that even more. And so that we're really approaching things from a a combined perspective, you know, approach. But it it's really delightful, you know, like we want, here's a great example, going, I don't mean to hammer on Spanish immersion too much, but Richmond's looking for Spanish immersion, we're looking for Spanish immersion. So we did a joint, and they haven't done this in the past, Jeremy and I were like, let's just merge our two committees and look for staff. And then whether they apply to here or there, and then decide where they're going to be the best fit. And that's been a really effective model on trying to get the best people into the job and just hopefully a little bit more efficient process in some ways. Do not so much in others, who've got more people, but yeah, so that's that's been a wonderful. The other piece that stood out that I've been learning more and more that is different. Because I was also, when I was a teacher, I was the union president, so I've seen, you know, a different side. And and this district really cares about its people. There's a lot of times I get a teacher, like, I've exhausted my personal leave, I have that, you know, whatever, but now this came up. And I I really need to be there for my family for this. And the message I've gotten, working with H R, working with John, is let's make this happen for these people, you know. It's just a day or two, we'll figure it out versus, it was a pretty hard line in the other districts I've worked in. And I can see that, you know, there's a slippery slope, there's a, there's a, but I I I love that we are about taking care of our people and I and I truly believe that that makes for better education. When our our staff are taken care of and and feel that, so. How's that? Another controversial, sorry.
Missed the tour for that. Other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. You're also welcome to leave, so your call.
I might say a little bit. It's been a long time since I've been working. There's a lot of food, though, that we 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 got too, so help yourself.
Thank you for providing. All right, moving on to, yeah, if anybody wants to bring some things for all. Moving on to the student drug and alcohol policy, can I get a motion to approve the policy? Can I get a motion? Thank you. Andrew moved, Kevin seconded, the other way around. Yes, did I hear it twice?
Yeah.
Great, you get to choose. Any discussion on the policy, any questions, any? Rebecca, anything you want to add on this before we do a final vote?
No, I don't think so. We did add nicotine after that last meeting. We talked to the attorney, and I'm not sure why that camera is not working, sorry. And we ended up adding nicotine to the drug list after that last meeting, so that was an addition to it, but otherwise I don't have anything to add.
Did anybody at the board level or the district level receive comments from our our guests today? Did they have any sense what the nature of those comments were?
I looked through my email. I couldn't find anything.
Either.
The only thing I can think of, it was something that was sent to the high school or something like that. I don't know. It was to this exercise, like, was it to this policy, right? Should we postpone approval of this policy until we have an opportunity to to hear from them, considering they to have time to drive over here or work in the impacted table, but until the next meeting.
Rebecca, that's a question for you. Is there a date that we have to have this sign?
No, it's fine to wait until the next meeting on this one. The other two policies that are next, we do need to, I mean, they're just being warned, so no, this can wait if we feel like we need to wait.
Is that the general feeling to the board that we should give the comments before we do that and put, okay, so we'll have three policies for our meeting in August, too?
Can we just clarify who and how that should be sent so that it happens correctly? Yeah, if you send it to me, you know, if you're here at the end of the meeting, I'll make sure that the rest of the board gets it. Is that something you could hear maybe in a synopsis of to inform our decision now or is it just?
Do you know what the comments were?
I do know.
Do we need to take a motion panel this time until August?
Just something that was said, and it's just wordsmithing, but it seemed interesting, right? So definition of term substance abuse, the phrase misuse was used during the public comment. And I don't I don't know if there's a legal difference, but I do feel like misuse feels more less negative, I guess. I don't know if that matters, but I like that that phrasing more than abuse.
More comprehensive, I think, too.
I think it also speaks to, to me, abuse is is crossing a line. Whereas misuse could just be that kid on the playground doing a fun time.
I think it's becoming more the norm too, as it contributes to I don't want to say pandemic, but other issues that are related to mental health, somebody may not understand what they're getting themselves into.
Andrew?
Yeah, I just wanted to to say that, you know, the board is delegated to the administration to bring these policies to us. And I'm just a little concerned about what words we like better than the attorneys or the experts who've drafted these policies. So I'm just concerned about that that part of the discussion. I'm I'm not sure I'd I'd want to wordsmith this.
Before you before you do that, Rebecca, is there anything specific in the wording that we have to use?
I think that whatever we're thinking you want to change, we should run by an attorney before we make those changes. That would be my recommendation is that we have the attorney reveal any changes before we do that.
I just, yeah, that's, yeah, and that's fair. I know that often we're grabbing model policies from the V S A or the V S B A. That as we dig into them have been vetted more or less, depending on what's going on there. So I'm much more comfortable making changes now that I've found out that information, that they don't always have the time and capacity to do the vetting. That, you know, some of us have different information from the work that we do outside with students, so.
I'm going to bring this up at other comments, but I just want to state something was said in public comment. I read the policy earlier. That word was an interesting phrase. I think it's absolutely appropriate to be bringing these things up in this piece. Not wordsmithing it. I'm not diving into crossing boundaries with the administration. I recognized a term and I brought it up. I think we have to be very careful about policing ourselves around what we're saying, when we can say it, who we can say it to. This is a board meeting. We have some leeway. Here's some opportunity to have some conversation. We are all trying to do good things here, not put down something that somebody else wrote, so.
So is it the will of the board to make the, to have the attorneys look at whether we can use substance misuse versus substance abuse for this task? That I'll say I kind of think.
I know, this is a, I'm looking, I'm looking for, I'm looking for more than blind faces around here, troubled, yeah. I'd also like to see the other comments because I feel there could be some additional terms that we may want to look at in addition to abuse versus misuse.
Maybe if this policy is not approved at the next meeting, we may get another look at it to review the.
Yeah, okay, so we're going to table this and look at it at the next meeting. Rebecca, if you could have the have an attorney take a look at that change and if we need to talk offline. Happy to do that. We can talk about which which words and where.
They want to wait attorney until we have an opportunity to see their comments too and give it to the attorney.
Okay. Ready to move on? Okay. I can I get a motion to vote to warn both the fire and emergency prepared drills policy and the access control and visitor management policy? Thank you, Tom. Second. Thank you, Heather. Questions, comments on either of these policies? And Andrew, is there anything that you want to share about them?
No, John has some things in the superintendent report. All I can say is that, you know, we're already doing a lot of the components that are listed in here. And that this is just kind of the formalized process of doing it, so we're have already added the game.
Other comments, questions?
I don't need to. Go ahead.
Do we have any gaps that, you said mostly everything we made out this policy, we didn't need to do anything different?
Not not that I'm aware of. We already have really clear access control and visitor management at our schools. And so we're, again, we're formalizing the policy, but we already are doing the things that the policy asks. And same thing with emergency preparedness. We, starting this year, we had already started doing the And same thing with, um, emergency preparedness. We, starting this year, we had already started doing the option based drills. Um, and so again, we're, we're headed again. So this is just kind of formalizing the different pieces that the state is asking us to do, um, and we're already doing it. So no gaps in my world.
Yeah, I think, um, during the session, as the bill was coming through, John and I went through it and I'm. We're doing all of these things. There's nothing that we're not doing, but we didn't have the official policy on what it was.
Question then was, um, what constitutes? When a school is operating? Does it go through the afternoon and evening, like when there's a board meeting?
That's a good question. I don't know exactly.
Um, I believe it's when students are in the building. So we have the door locked until all the students left who were here as part of the after school program and not part of. Uh, they weren't even part of a school program. It was the after school program that was running it and all the doors were locked and all of the. Um, but after the last student left and that program left, it's going to be unlocked the door for the board. So, um, I believe it's when students are in the building.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that. So Todd and I, we went outside, uh, to greet, uh, board members, uh, because the doors were locked at the time. And as Ed indicated, um, I don't know if it's part two or your record or whoever was here, but, um, until six o'clock, all students were out, all doors were man locked.
Okay, so each school has a set. Timeline as to when they consider the operating hours to be done.
And it varies from school to school depending on if they're having, you know, they have students in the building to a particular time. Here it's six o'clock, smiley, I think it's much shorter than that. It might be like three forty-five or something like that. I don't know the exact time.
And after that time, if there's activities in the school, the access is. Open?
Uh, it would. Yeah, depends. I mean, it would have to be locked, um, unless there was like an event going on and then that, that would be, you know, require a previous permission.
We can get clarification on that though, so warning of the policy. Good time to ask these questions. We need to be more. Prescriptive on any of that.
Who goes to be on top of this? A short term, a per implementation of a bill.
Yes. That was a, yeah, we, I mean. We are in a really good place, um, our district, a lot of these, a lot of schools have not been doing these things. And that's why this is being, you know, because it has become a law, so yeah. Um, do we need to vote? Warning, we just need to put it on the agenda, right? Bring it up, we don't need to vote. Yes, thank you. Okay. Ready to move on? Great, um, we have a seconded motion from the finance and facilities committee to transfer the fiscal year twenty-three surplus funds to the capital reserve fund. Lisa, do you want to talk about this or you want to both talk about this? All right, Nicole, would you, um, just give us a brief update, a brief narration?
Hello, good evening, yes. Um, so we met on Thursday and the administration made a recommendation to the finance committee. To transfer some additional money to the capital reserve fund. Um, we ended the prior fiscal year, um, with a little bit of a higher fund balance than we were originally anticipating. Um, and as the memo notes, with some unknowns in the future around PCBs and radon and stormwater runoff. We just thought it would be a good idea to, um, transfer some two hundred thousand additional dollars. Making our total transfer for the year three hundred thousand to bulk up the capital reserve fund a bit.
Questions, comments? Okay, so it comes as a seconded motion, so we just have to vote on this. So all in favor of. The additional capital transfer. Say I or give me a thumbs.
Aye.
You oppose? Any extension? Okay, um, that passed unanimously. And as mentioned earlier, um, the tax anticipation note, just a notification, if anybody has any questions on that? Okay. Great, um.
I'm going to, that's the second emotion we're going to have to.
Oh, so sorry, before you were here, um, it was, we talked about the fact that it is no longer, it's something that the finance committee can approve. And that the full board does not need to approve. Um, superintendent report, um, so before I turn it over to anybody else, I just wanted to. Note that we have the pictures of all of the folks who are retiring from the district. I love that we start the year with pictures of our new employees and we end the year with pictures of the folks that are retiring. Um, and really want to just deeply thank these folks who have given so much of themselves and their time and their energy to our district. They've, yeah, they've been with us for a long time and there's some pretty, um, pretty big shoes to fill. So, um, just want to say a big thank you. Does anybody have questions, anything that you wanted to highlight?
Um, so this is, uh, John's report, um, and so, yeah, we just wanted to highlight the retirees and also, uh, recent graduates. As well, and then just really to say that, you know, this year was a great year. You know, we made some vast improvements kind of across the board, um, especially compared to years past, which had a variety of challenges. And, um, you know, this is my second year in the district and it was just really impressive to see how hard. Everyone at all levels have been working to move forward with the broader district priorities. Todd spoke to several of them, um, including kind of our district wide work with developing the professional learning community collaborative groups. To increase opportunities for educator collaboration, to really look at student data, to help with the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support process. Um, the work around literacy, um, you know, trying to move forward integrity, uh, across all of our schools. We just utilized a chunk of SRT two funds to buy, um, quite a few decodable book sets for all of our schools. To just kind of bulk up what we have as far as resources for that. In addition to purchasing curriculum materials for increasing our finance instruction. And then other professional development tools as well focused on literacy. And so massive amounts of work being done this year by teachers in the development of what are called the benchmark understandings. And the nested learning targets, so kind of the specific things that we expect students to know and be able to do. Um, in different grade levels and content areas and, you know, and that's just kind of the, uh, top of the lesson. I mean, just so many things this year. I met with our instructional coach team this morning. And they're also a really key part of this work, in addition, obviously, to all of the teachers too. And so it's just been really, um, you know, impressive to see how much, uh, we've been able to accomplish in one year. And we have a really strong trajectory related to all of the district priorities. Obviously work to do, um, you know, certainly, but we're, we're looking good.
Um, just want to mention graduation at the high school is, you know, mentioned in here. It is Saturday, it's coming up Saturday at ten in the morning. I think.
Ten sounds right.
Ten sounds right, um, at the high school, um, the board is invited, please come. It's been enjoyable for folks who have come in the past. I think bring a chair.
And also I, Heather and I are going to do our best to have breakfast treats.
Oh.
We really felt like it was a place for community last year. People were having picnics. Everyone had a square and it was really nice hanging out behind all of that and see just. How proud everybody was for reaching that benchmark. Runners, beach chairs, cats and water.
Um, Andrew, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Um, I know during the pandemic, we switched, uh, for those reasons to having the graduation at the high school. But I, I think before that it had been, um, at Patrick Jim at UVM for a number of years. I'm just curious if this is a permanent change. And maybe why?
Um, I hope it's a permanent change. I, do you have an answer?
I mean, I talked to Mr. Weston about that. I asked him point blank that question. For him, I think it's his, I think it's ultimately his call. He decides outdoors or indoors, onsite or offsite. I think we've given that to, to him, uh, to decide and it's kind of a, let's see how it goes. Kind of, you know, expected answer. We've had good weather, um, every year so far. I think he likes, um, having it on site, but we've yet to experience a weather situation. Where you have to turn people away at last minute because only some people can fit into the high school. Whereas if you're doing it at Patrick Jim's museum. You know, it's got plenty of seating and it's pretty predictable, so. You give the impression of, well, we'll, we'll, we'll go with this approach for as long as.
It works.
It's sunny out. Because it's pretty disappointing if people travel, you know, whatever, thinking it's going to be outdoors and then you have to, you know, listen to it or watch it from the car.
Yeah, I would say having gone last year was my first year, definitely has a real festive fun atmosphere. On the downside, it is, like, we're in, like, way, like, probably the last row that you get. And it was really hard to see Anne here. But, uh, you know, that like, it looks like most of the families, like, there were definitely several squares between us and families. So like, it looks like maybe most of the families don't have that problem, but, um. That was, we the one downside, I would say. But other than that, I think it's a great location, especially too, the kids spent all their years there. They have memories on those fields, I don't know. I really recommend everybody.
But.
Superintendent report?
Yeah, superintendent. But quickly on the graduation, I, I've always felt like it's a culminating event of the district, not just the school. And I feel like, and our board is represented, we have a role to play at the graduation ceremony. It's the only official business that the board does with students. I think the board should attend, not necessarily be. You know, just, we should be there as a entity versus just sending our chair. And if we could start to at least be there with our chairs, maybe there'll be a spot where we, we'll get a square someday. To attend as a, as a board. The question I had was around the calendar. It was in the, um, the superintendent's report about the last day of work. Last day of school, sorry, um. And, um. So looking at the calendar for next year. Uh, the last, the scheduled day is June fourteenth, this is Friday. And then if you go three school days more, June nineteenth is a Wednesday. Um, might be something to take up with the HR committee. But, um, it feels like we're, we're always pushing into, you know, what some people feel is a necessary holiday given. June nineteenth. This year.
Federal holiday.
Right, and there's only a couple of days that I personally have off and work, but the school doesn't. Is Martin Luther King Day in Juneteenth, uh, to, and my company celebrates when the district does it. So maybe we need to think about how we provision that for our staff. I know it's very, you know, if it happens to fall and it is a holiday, if it doesn't, that makes the contract difficult. But I think it's something we need to look at. And having a plan for it.
Thank you. I'll, uh, relay that to John, um. The calendars are made regionally amongst all the superintendents. And so it, a lot of it has to do with what they decide at the group level, but I'll certainly bring that to John to bring to that regional level.
Like right now, it's, you know, last day of school and the last day of work for the staff is June fourteenth. You know, so it's only conditionally, right, if we happen to have snow days to bump into that extreme. And that's where, you know, I think we should have a, a better plan for than what we have right now. Very true.
Yep, yeah, I'll relay that to John.
Um, so we as a board can say there won't be, um, school work happen on a certain day. Um, and so, um, this year when the schedule did go through the nineteenth and we had, um, question from community members. On, you know, why we have school on that day, that was a, um, completely unexpected, right? But it is no longer unexpected than we knew. So, um, that is, it, it is on John's radar. It's one of those things that we would like to not have school on Juneteenth in the future.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's a good call out.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just curious, uh, we approved the calendar back in April or May, April? This, this wasn't a conversation. At that point, we didn't bring up Juneteenth.
It's not, um, it's not scheduled to be a school day.
It's not.
If there are a lot of snow days, it could be, but it's not scheduled to be a snow.
Well, but it wasn't scheduled to be a school day this year either.
Correct.
So I'm just saying, like, in terms of the conversation, we're having it now because it's right in front of us. As opposed to when the calendar was published. I think the one thing that might be interesting to, in, in John's report. Speaks about how the professional development days for staff go because there's an extra three days. That, uh, staff actually go to school after the twentieth. So is it within our purview to talk about how the professional development calendar is built? And how that implicates, uh, because right, not every school is going till the twentieth in the district. Even though we follow a region wide calendar.
And we go one day, so, um, just.
Yeah, then extra three days for snow days, so the staff is one day.
Yeah, one day after students.
The professional development days are spread out over the year.
Right, so we have the twenty-first is an in-service day, the last day is the twentieth, so it's just the twenty-first and then.
Um, and that's, so, yeah. Just ask your question part again.
Uh, my question was, uh, is, is it within the purview of the board to work with the superintendent? Around how those staff professional days are built out because, and I'm speculating here a little bit. Part of why our date is further back is because of snow days, but also because of the staff professional days throughout the year.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, and I keep looking because Rebecca's not here anymore. But I believe that those are, um, negotiated through the contract. So, um, we can get clarification on that?
That would have been my comment that the, uh, you know, teachers have a union that go through negotiating and if that's a, a concern of theirs, uh, they would certainly bring that up. Bring that directly to the administration is normally how I would have expected that to be handled.
I, I, I wasn't saying a concern of the teachers. I was just in terms of this conversation about the days getting pushed back. And the implication of June nineteenth specifically right now, just how that, it is nothing to do. Not bringing any concerns to the teachers, just that piece is wondering if that fits within the conversation with Rebecca. Yes, I understand that there are days, number of days negotiated. I don't know necessarily if specific days are negotiated in the teacher contract.
Yeah.
I think they're negotiated with the union.
I, yeah, I, I will look into that as well, um, but they are usually specifically designated and, uh, as I understand it, yes. But I will.
Graduation time, sorry, I just got a response on that one. Um, one second here. Going just like back, um, it will be announced at noon on Wednesday, the time for graduation. Generally, it is at ten a.m., so I think that's a weather issue.
Yeah.
Well, and I did look it up and it said on the website, it said TBA.
Yeah, that's the rest of the answer.
Okay, I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, but that's actually for Andrew, but it's not, I'm not going to tell you about the date. Are there, I, are there dates, are there days built in, like personnel and we exceeded those?
Yeah.
Or there's no snow days built in?
I don't, they don't build in snow day. I was actually talking to John about this today, so like back in the day, um, they, they did build in snow days. But then it just got really confusing for folks and so now we just add those days on, so they don't generally build them anymore. But they did used to do that, um, at least, I don't know about this district, but in Mount A where I was from, back in like, you know, maybe only eight or so years ago. So it was a practice that they used to do.
I mean, I think it can be tricky for, for parents. It's like all of a sudden, you know, oh, it turns out we're not going to have this day or, you know, school this day. But, um. That's another way to do it, right? Like then you, you get days back and.
Right.
There's a scramble for childcare.
Oh, yeah.
Empathetic too, but, um, obviously, I mean, if we're lucky, we're going to have snow days. It's just, it's like we shouldn't bet against them. So, um, I don't know. I'd be curious if that, if that's something we can revisit.
Potentially. Yeah, I know that specific thing did come up and it seemed that at least regionally, um, I don't know. You know, there could be other districts that do it in the state, but regionally they've moved away from that. But yeah, it's an ongoing challenge because I've got an eight-year-old and a 12-year-old and run into the same, same sorts of issues.
Yeah.
Especially with the camps and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're talking about it.
Okay. I don't want to. That's what I'm saying.
Andrew, I wanted to just, uh, hear more about the required state testing. And reading that letter, that whole situation kind of came as a surprise to me. I mean, that it was so obvious. Like I, I wasn't surprised that there were problems with implementing a new test. I was just surprised that there had been the, what the problems were.
Yeah. Um, well, first I just want to thank Jeff Wallace and our other digital learning leaders in the district and just everyone who helped out because they did a phenomenal job to really make sure that we did it really well. And so want to make sure that they get credit for that because they did do a phenomenal job, given, um, you know, a variety of challenges with implementing that. Um, again, as you indicated, the letter from the state acknowledged, um, you know, those issues because there were, and it wasn't just here, it was across the state. And, you know, it just stems from, it's the first year doing the, um, that particular assessment as we moved away from the S-Backs, which we had done in years prior. So I think that was one component of it. Um, and so it kind of stemmed to both the agency of education and the company Cognia, um, of why there are those issues. The hope is that, you know, we move through those and that they can resolve those for upcoming years. Um, some districts, you know, definitely struggled. Um, I would say overall, I think we did a really good job because of Jeff's leadership. Jeff, do you want to talk about some of the nitty gritty of, of that work?
I mean, I think for our district, we were pretty successful. Like I think really just we'd spent a lot of time preparing for it. And like, you know, the state did do like weekly meetings with everyone. Um, but just staying ahead of it and watching what was happening. And I think, um, our teachers are pretty good at resiliency and like figuring things out on the fly. So, um, but I think overall it went really well for our district. We didn't have the massive glitches that a lot of people had and things like that. So we, we put all of our tech team in buildings as they were rolling it out, as they were doing the first tests. And so really have, you know, boots on the ground, helping teachers through the process. So, yeah.
It's great to hear.
Yeah. I mean, I talked to colleagues across the state and in other districts. I mean, it was hugely challenging and they did not, they were not as well prepared as we were. And so that's say, we didn't have glitches, but because of our leadership, uh, with tech and just like Jeff was saying, the resiliency of our own teachers, um, we were able to move through those and, um, you know, administer the tests.
As I said, like next year, the impact that we got is this is a better process, not just the test itself. But the process is easier to administer. And so I think next year, teachers have seen it and it will be a smooth process. And it's, other than the content itself, there were some issues that the letter talked about. I think that, um, they're actually addressing now the state, the Vermont's part of that board that looks at the test is working through the process right now. So I think next year we won't have.
But how will we communicate that to the community?
That I can talk to John about that component of things. Uh, we have, um, provided feedback to the AOE as well so that we can help inform that in the future. And then just another piece I want to throw out there is, as you're probably aware, like right before these tests were supposed to be rolled out, the Secretary of Education left and so the deputy had to take over. So, you know, not to have that be an excuse, but there, there's also, there are many issues at the Agency of Education that I think led, led to this. Um, but I can talk to John about, um, the, how we maybe report out on that.
Just because we do all, we receive a letter that the company is your kiddo and how they do in that class. And I think there's varying amounts of, you know, grains of salt that people take that with. But it is like a, a, a data point that reflects upon our district and where our district is in the state, where our kids are nationally. So the fact that there were just, there's, it seems like there's some forgiveness that should be made aware, especially, you know, that they were being tested on information they may not have seen.
Totally.
Not that we want people teaching to a task, but I think that's all really important to communicate when that information comes out.
Absolutely. Oh, certainly. Yeah. When we do send out that information, we'll categorically be providing, um, you know, the sorts of things you just talked about. And, you know, as a district, that's one data point that we use.
Sure.
Um, and, you know, like you were saying, you know, we'll be looking at that data with a grain of salt, knowing some of the issues that came out. But, uh.
And we know that, and we know that, but I don't know that the vast majority of parents understand, you know, how that, um, how we measure our student success.
Absolutely. In years past, we've sent a letter out, um, kind of providing kind of the basics around S-Back. And I think it was, um, they have been last year, the year before, there was a little component that indicated that, you know, these tests were given like under kind of extenuating circumstances. Just so that folks know, like, you know, we should not be reading into these results as we have in years past. So we'll have something like that in the future as well. For sure.
Just to underline that, I think that letter is something that we should, you know, look at. That's our, pretty important. It's not, doesn't go to the full community, but it goes to a lot of our stakeholders. And, uh, when I get that for my kids, I don't, that's the part like, why are we sending this out? It's really my first question. This is a indicator of how our district is performing. Why, why do the parents get, you know, my, my microscopic indicator for this test? And it's really trends, you know, as a board, we're being told to look at it from a trending perspective. Now we have a brand new test, um, that apparently we were able to implement, but many other districts didn't do so well. So maybe that means we're going to look great. Maybe that means we're not going to look great. Who knows?
Sure.
But it's basically saying we're not, you know, this doesn't mean much to us as a district when we see these results. And yet it's one of the only things we send in a colored, beautiful letter.
On its own.
Maybe, um, you know, we should consider that, um, altogether that, that communication, not just what's written.
Yeah. Sure.
Maybe it's mandated.
That's the only thing I don't know.
I think because the state really is saying that because it's federally required, that we're not allowed to. Like just the integrity of the test process to say like, oh yeah, this was a nice basic way, you know.
Maybe making sense.
I think you should all learn how to speak about it better and.
I think that's a great, I, I think that's something that, you know, when it gets closer to those things come out, we could talk about that so that all of you, um, when you're talking with your constituents can speak to kind of, you know, what we're talking about right now, some of the issues with implementation. And that it's, you know, one data point that we use that our district and certainly, you know, looking at that. Cause as Jeff said, I actually don't know if it's a requirement or not. I'm guessing it might be, but I don't know.
Was there, um, student feedback, like exit tickets or interviews about their experience?
For that required state test? Not that I'm aware of. No, usually it's not something that we do. So, uh, no, I don't think we have that.
Good. We're ready. Um, just to, just very quick, um, the warrant policies that we just did that it says in the note that we have to meet before August 1st. We no longer have to meet before August 1st to approve them. We can do it as long as we do before school starts, we're fine and have a meeting, um, August 21st or 22nd. Um, so we can just do that then. So we will not have a special meeting just for that purpose of summer. Sorry that I forgot to mention that. All right. Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from May 22nd, please? So, thank you, Heather. Second, thank you Lisa. Um, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, Pat. Please abstain. Uh, thank you. Committee reports, finance and facilities. Um, have we approved the charter? Is this, this, we have not, correct?
We, we approved the charter in committee.
Yep.
The addition of a mission statement. So this is ready to be voted on by the board.
Does anybody, so it comes as a seconded motion. We don't need it to be, um, motioned. Any big changes from the previous one that you wanted to highlight? Is there anything that sort of rearranged things so that it's a little bit more clear? Um, we added some things about facilities and changed the name committee. And added a, a mission statement for the purpose. Any questions from board members? All in favor of approving the finance and facilities committee charter? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It proves unanimously. Thank you. Um, anything else, finance?
Basically charter.
Great. Um, community engagement and communication. Have we approved that charter yet?
No, we approved it in committee.
Okay. So it comes as a seconded motion?
Yeah.
Anything you wanted to mention about that?
Um, no.
This is a net new, right?
So we rewrote the charter, which I'm happy to read. We made goals for ourselves and then we, for the next year. And then we, um, developed actual tasks that the committee should continually try to accomplish. There really wasn't like a daily or yearly job of the committee, you know? So that's what we've worked on, saying this is something that we will keep an eye on and do all the time versus the goals that we want to check off over the next year.
So, um, I'm just having a, a moment of a reaction to perhaps this isn't the time, but maybe before next year, we would have all of the charters written in the same format.
Totally.
Because I think that's.
It, it not, that absolutely.
We didn't have a, yeah.
It's not until like I've had the chance to see.
All of the other charters.
Some of the language, the language is, yeah, I absolutely think.
And I.
I mean, sometimes that happens. That's something I was speaking with Pat about even within the minutes. When you read other committees' minutes, I'm just not, there's no format, which I think would be super helpful for all of us. Me.
Um, any other questions for Katie or the community engagement and communication committee? So, um, I would like to approve the charter without the goals. I feel like, I mean, I think the goals are going to be a bigger discussion. Is, are folks comfortable with that? I know it's listed all as one document, but.
Without the goals and tasks or just the goals?
Um, just the goals. The tasks, I think are part of the charter, right? Like that's what the committee does. So that's kind of that enumerated piece of, of the committee. I'm sure the goals are fine, but it's, um, one o'clock in the morning in my brain and I am no longer processing. But if other folks are processing well, then we can kind of keep going forward with it as it stands.
Didn't we, there wasn't there another committee's charter that we approved that had goals in it?
Regional collaboration.
Yeah. We had goals kind of, yeah. Um, I think we said what we do.
Yeah.
They want to make it clear what we, what, what our, what the charter looked like or what the mission, you know, so it was less abstract and more tangible. I mean, if you want to go forward even without approving the goals, I think that's fine. But I would say that probably we would want to just keep the goals. I mean, you know, I mean, we would probably try and move forward on those goals because this is a committee that needs to make some momentum. So I'm not saying that you necessarily, I'm not, I don't want to pressure anybody to approve the goals. But I do say as a member of this committee, we really need to get to work on something. And keeping it abstract is not going to help us in that. So, okay. So if we leave this meeting tonight with no goals, I think we should have our next meeting and talk about how we're going to tackle those goals.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I think the only subtle difference maybe, um, for the other one we did was the goals were like below.
Yeah.
And they're like at the top, it's like, here's the charter, here's the responsibilities that the committee's going to take on. And it's like, oh, by the way, here's, here's our near-term focus. But it wasn't really part of the charter.
I had no idea. I happily would have done that. Yeah. So I feel like if we approve this charter with goals in it, there's no reason why we shouldn't approve this charter with goals.
Yeah.
My, that's what I feel about it.
The condition that I swap.
Yeah, but just switch it around a little bit.
That's great.
Okay. Like that works for me?
Yeah.
Just a clarification question. It doesn't have to be answered today, especially if we're running that.
It's totally fine.
But also there's a recollection I had and I'm trying to remember what we go for, for the regional collaboration goals, whether they need this or not, but that the goals were, they were, the goals were intended to be committee goals, but also with a vision of these are informing the district-wide goals that example, like one day we will send. So when I read these goals, I think they work as great committee-level goals. You know, overall, I mean, that wasn't in those conversations, but there is a question as to whether these goals are those kind of bigger picture, more strategic goals that the BOP was that each committee is going to be feeding up towards kind of our more strategic, you know, district-level goals and planning. I'm not necessarily seeing that, uh, here though, perhaps, you know, a couple of these, I think maybe is built towards that. So I would just flag that as a point of discussion, whether it's today or later. But how do you actually operationalize these goals that we're thinking are more kind of, or not operationalized, but really come up with and move forward these more strategic goals? And these are the beginnings of that now that I'm looking at it.
Right. Yeah. And, and I guess again, not all here, but, um, it, I see this as the committee that, um, helps the board implement goals and not necessarily has the goals that drive the board's work, right? But helps the board to implement the, so that could be, could be fit as it. Yeah.
I, I think the tasks cover a lot of what you're saying as, as opposed to the goals.
The test get there.
Yeah. The charge of this committee is so broad and has, has been so difficult. We really need all the time of this type. And I don't know that we're moving to be able to fight honestly. Because we're still having so much discretion about what our purpose is. And I for one, can't have those conversations again. So if we can't start moving forward, I'm going to really reconsider my involvement on this particular committee. It, it just has to move towards. And what we have here is, is, it's a list of things that we can start doing and implementing. We just need to get some action. And then I think we can bring all kinds, you know, we, we can bring all kinds of new ideas in and expand this. Um, so.
I agree with Allison saying too. I also feel like there's a certain.
Sorry. I was, I had nodded at Kevin and I didn't see your hand up.
I gotta say something good.
Yeah, you do.
But hold on what Tom said and maybe what we're going to say. I, I do agree that when we put this new structure in place, we were, you know, thoughtful in the communities that we were creating or keeping and changing. We added one, we changed a couple, whatever. And the thought hope was that these committees would help the board in their areas of focus to create goals for the board. I think these goals that the committee has are great. I think the momentum is there and the committee should work on it. There might be a summary goal that the board could carry. Somebody could write this that represents all those five, like more near-term goals. But I, I think these are the right things that the committee should be working on. And to Allison's point, we shouldn't ask the committee to do more work with the charter. We should just ask them to work on these things.
I just agree. Just wanted to.
I wanted to.
Bring, bring it up as a reminder.
Bring, bring it up as a reminder that, like, you know, how does this fit into that larger thing? Not to derail the great work, because I totally acknowledge that we want to get.
They represent an aspirational goal that is, somebody could just say this.
I don't want to do a back and forth, though. So appreciate that, appreciate that, Heather.
Thanks, thank you for what you said. I, I'm just, I, being on the committee, I feel like there does need to be some action. I feel like there's a pause in a lot that we talked about that requires other board members to actually do things. And until we can get, get, actually implement some of these things, we're not going to be able to actually disseminate that to you guys. And I just feel like we spend a lot of time trying to fit our wheels. And it's just very frustrating. So if we can get started soon on something or anything, then I feel like the committee can actually do something. But I've been in the committee for a year and a half now and given it to anybody.
So.
Because there's always so much talk of, we, we, we think of ideas and it comes back to the board and it's like, well, no. Like, I just feel like there's a lot of, not as like support for, from other, for the board as a whole, for what we are trying to do and accomplish.
So board bios is something that we've never had, and that did come from this committee. So I don't want folks to feel like nothing has happened, because that did happen, it got up on the website, and it is better, we are better for it. So I'm hearing a lot of frustration and I just want folks to be able to celebrate the victory small or big fashion fair.
I, can I say something? I also just want to say that we, they're part of getting to this point and getting these thoughts on paper has been a long process, and that is because the committee has completely changed and the purpose of the committee has changed. And the purpose of the committee prior was to represent the informed voice of the community, but also be a source of information gathering and processing and reporting on different events that the district may hold in order to obtain information or that other committees would hold. And I saw, and then other committee members saw, that there is a greater need in our communities and within this board than just that task. So I think many, many conversations that have been exhausting have also been important and have brought us to this point. And an important task is coordinate district-wide events and collaboration with other boards, subcommittees, or as requested by the board, which could be a goal that has moved. But that's the, like, real, I feel like, real job that we have. And so until finance committee has to gather information from the community or until one of the other committees really, I feel like, invokes us or the district asks us to search for that information, we're doing nothing. So that is why I have, with these wonderful colleagues, worked to create actual motion. So that's where Matt thought the all of this is come.
Great, so I think we're ready to vote. Okay, so we're going to leave it intact. All in favor of approving the community engagement and communication committee charter as presented? Aye? Opposed? Substentions? Great, I appreciate that robust discussion and, and the pushback. That was good. D I V charter has been approved, hasn't it? Didn't we do it at the last committee?
We did, and then we made a revision, and it was approved again by the committee. The revision was made based on the comments from Dr. Brown.
Yeah. So, so then, anything else, anything that you want to report since the last meeting? I think that was.
We added goals.
Okay. Great. I missed the last meeting, I apologize. Okay.
I'm the only one who doesn't have access.
Yeah. I have access.
It's because you're part of the, and I have.
Oh. Super secret, sorry. I can actually, yeah, change that to anyone with the link. Then, yeah, restricted. I, I can't change it, sorry.
Yeah, I'm pretty deliberate when I give access to people.
I don't have access to change who the.
You, you want to look at that? You were supposed to look at this much earlier than now, because I know.
All right, well done. Trainings, figure out where our gaps, our equity gaps are in the board. I'm just kind of saying them out loud.
Could you share this, your screen? You're up, right?
It's possible. Yeah. I, no, it's totally possible. I can, that's a good call. Again, not a hundred percent here.
We're on the regional collaboration.
Thank you. I could. Or my computers, I. It's, it wants, it's, that would be great. If you have access, that would be much better.
Just got access.
You do now, too.
Thank you, Jeff.
You see, you would always have access for being.
Even more, so it's great. And just go down to the goals. Are you in your own Google account?
Perfect.
That's the other thing, if you're in a different Google account. It won't, it won't let you. Okay, so this comes to the board as a seconded motion from the committee, yes? Committee approved for the goals.
The phrasey, I'll be in the regional collaborative with objectives, I don't know if that would change anything. It would change ours to goals, so it's.
Substentions? What did we just approve for community?
So. I develop an equity policy. I, I, I would like to talk about further, is that's not a one-year goal, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Some of these are short-term, some of these are long-term, some of these are going to take a while.
Okay.
Timeline is not elaborate, is that correct?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't put timelines on this, knowing and understanding that one of the first things we'd like to start doing is training with the board members. Right, and then as we go through that together, develop an equity policy. And hopefully in the future, I talked to Andrew about inviting our equity coaches from our schools to visit and work with us, too.
Other questions for Tara? All in favor of approving the goals?
Aye.
Opposed? Substentions? Okay. Regional collaboration, nothing to report, Kevin? Go ahead. Something to report? Do you have something to report?
I just want to thank whoever wrote the minutes. I, I was thinking here that I was supposed to do that, and I did, but somebody must have watched the video of the meeting. It took really good minutes, so that's great. In a nutshell, when we last met, you know, we were like one, you know, one step ahead, sort of. We got our goals and all that approved, and now we got to start doing the work. Had good discussion about where we should put our focus in the next couple of months. And basically, the, what we're going to look is internally. Discussion with Mr. Weston, I mean, reading in her file, kind of get an understanding of where we are with some of these initiatives. And then markets. So we're going to try to be this summer, I think it's a while. Graduation is over, and we finally get into our last day of school.
Great, yes.
Regional advisory board update?
Yeah, that would be nice. You have one?
Yeah.
Excellent.
I went to it.
Great.
It was at Beta Technologies. It got co-opted by Beta Technologies. The person there is, you know, very engaging and talking about all the possibilities of, of what Beta's trying to do here in the region. I will try not to channel the angst that I think Chuck saw as the previous RAB. It's business as usual with that RAB. There was representation from most districts. There, there was, I built in to have some more conversations, but I think this is really an opportunity still for our board to be involved. I think there needs to be a stronger district voice at these meetings and a plan. It's, it's pretty clear, the, you know, the building of the new Burlington High School Technical Center is a really good example where there's some opportunity to talk about, they talked a lot about middle school and integrating tech into middle school and bringing that in. And, and really, the conversation started to go, but this idea of how do you put tech into the schools as opposed to having standalone pieces? It, it really does need its own governance structure. From, from that one meeting that I was at, it was pretty clear that it's being driven by the superintendents of Burlington and Essex. And so I think there are a lot of measures that are out there to, to sort of demonstrate success around the program. And I think the different tech programs are really working hard to meet those measurements, to really show value, right? Making sure that the right programs are being offered, but it only meets four times a year. So it really becomes a, talk about the moment. There was no follow-up to the two meetings that they, that they had, which was pretty disappointing, because it was, that was about the most student-driven event that I've been to in a long time, where.
The visiting.
The visiting service, yeah, where they brought in, you know, and I, I would not as about, I went as a, as an employee of my organization, Vermont of the Learning. Not, this was before I was the RAB person, but the perspective was really excellent to see students there. They're invested, right? It's an opportunity to rethink tech. There was some conversation about tech historically being the place where you would go if you, like, weren't successful. But how do you reimagine tech as a part that really is a vibrant educational piece that sits there with any number of other traditional offerings? So I don't, I, I'm, I'm thinking through the, the regional collaborative group that there would be an opportunity to kind of build some connectivity with other boards around this to help bring a little bit more voice to the table. I think, you know, the, the example of a M U student go to Burlington, spends almost as much time on the bus as they do in the program, because of the half-day program. And, and that really can present a lot of learning challenges. Unless we're going to fully equip these buses with Wi-Fi and tables, and, I mean, we can rethink transportation, but, you know, that's a, that's different conversation. But I do think we need to do some advocacy around that.
I just have some, I guess, just basic questions. How many districts are in the RAB?
So it's every district in Chittany County plus Franklin County, or it might just be the F A's.
Just the F A's.
So, so that's nine.
And do you feel that, and there are other, other boards in the district that are more involved than we are? Or do you think there's such a total lack of involvement or engagement, true?
I think there's a difference between the, and I'll go with the inner ring of Chittany County. Right, so students Winuski, students South Burlington, Essex, obviously, Colchester, their access is, is pretty, they're close, right? So they don't have that same transfer, so it doesn't feel as onerous on the student to get in there. So I, I don't know if everybody is like that. It is also very much, I think, depending on the, when you go to Essex the whole day, you become really like, they see it as you're an Essex student. I, I would say, much.
But more like, is it more, like, I'm, I'm thinking more like, you're a member of the RAB. Are there other school boards that have members on there that are more active than others? Or is it more just, it's just kind of?
More active than others. There, there, yes, there are. But, but the input that you can provide is limited if you're not on the, I don't know.
We don't move the budget, we don't review the budget, we don't have input necessarily on the budget.
So, but we are among the more involved sending school folks representing, uh, representative.
Is there a way that we can get more involved? Because I feel like if we're sending a lot of people to a program, that we don't have any say over how it happens or runs, or, I mean, is there an avenue for that? Or it's just kind of like, we're just at the wheel, we're seeing what they decide and how we send them here?
So.
I'm still figuring out the whole landscape, so.
So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a yes and, right? Like, the structure, the way it is, will always limit our input. So changing the structure, which is big, that's legislative, and that's something that, in my opinion, needs to happen, right? So that's, that's one way. And just to be at every meeting, really involved, really spending a lot of time on it, is the other way. But it's, neither is easy.
There's also the report that the, I'm sorry, the legislator, you know, just commissioned a report, and I'm not sure they fully digested the, sort of, the, look at the executive summary, I think one of the things is like, you know, governance structure of all of the tech centers and, and then funding, like, how are we funding these schools? Because that's, I think, where that influence comes in is, I'm not sure this is correct, but I feel like something like seventy percent, or is it forty percent of the students in the tech centers are not their district, right? So.
Most are, most are local.
Most are local, so.
Yeah.
Forty percent of students that go to Burlington Tech or Essex Tech are not those districts. So it's a small percentage, but it's still a significant chunk.
Okay. I think one of the things that I was hearing is that there is like, how do we make change? And I think about communication, right? And so I know in my grade level of parents, like, a lot of sixth-grade parents, there are a lot of people who are into the concept of tech ed and it having this more contemporary definition. And so I wonder, you know, how do we mobilize a lot of these people who want to send their kids there but have no concept of all of this background information? Because I think that part is going to be really disappointing when they find out that their kid will spend as much time on the bus as they would in the classroom. They're not going to do it.
Yeah.
They're going to find another way to supplement that part of learning for their kids.
And it's also competitive, so even if you want to get into a program, you're not guaranteed a spot.
Right.
So I think.
And what, what, what is that? Like, what is the criteria?
It depends on the program.
It's an application process.
But it's not a geographical process.
I don't know if there's a geographical distribution.
Okay.
Probably not.
And it only is more time on the bus if you're going to Burlington, not if you're going to Essex.
Correct.
Right, right, so just to be really clear. And most of the students from our district go to Essex, not Brooklyn.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, Brooklyn is a half-day, that's why it's that percentage of.
But again, this could be something that would be, like, where the community and communication committee and engagement and all of those letters and words could help. I don't know, I, it just seems like there's a place to help get information out, and I don't know. But that doesn't really change, more parents wanting more things. But that doesn't really change. More parents wanting more things. Does that impact what this board structure is? It's legislative, you were saying, it's predetermined. We can't really change that unless we all decided we wanted a tech center at our high school.
Sorry, I don't even know how to answer that. I mean, I'm just saying, I'm trying to understand that.
You're going to answer that? Great.
Close it up. Well, I don't want to put too much pressure on myself, but but I think where we're going is there's this, so there's communication issue. There's like kind of the baseline, hey, what is tech? How do my kids get into tech? You know, that's probably a middle school, high school kind of conversation thing that they should be having, but I do think that there's a key, and and I don't know how we do it here. It could be better. I don't know. But it's definitely a good question to ask. I think that the larger discussion we're having this with the regional collaboration group is that clearly there is a need for us to have some regional conversations around CTE where we ask ourselves first, and this is the point that I think Kevin made earlier, is our next step in that committee, we knew that CTE was something that was a hot topic. We felt comfortable moving forward with that as a priority for the regional collaboration group. That, okay, now let's do a little more like work where we go talk to Mike Weston and whoever else later this summer to say, I think maybe we're talking more, a little more broad than CTE, but I think CTE is the big focus, right, Kevin? And the, it'll be, what are some of the needs that we have? And so some of the stuff we've already addressed in terms of the busing, the, you know, are there, are there opportunities for us to do more of this at our school? What are some other schools doing in terms of supplementing tech programs through Dipping of Milton has some things going on and other folks? So there's a lot of questions to be asked, I think, for us internally to say, what do we think our priorities are? And then it's, well, what do the other communities think? Are they on board with us? And I think that to the point around, you know, right now, we lean really hard, regional advisory committee, as if a real board. Advisory might as well be the first letter, right? It is not a governance body at all. But if you have a critical mass of people going through those meetings and saying, we need to do things differently, you know, legislation may be better, but that does start to make some momentum and people are starting to to shake, shake the trees a little bit. So I think that's the goal of the regional collaboration group, is to kind of bring this going forward. You know, to, you know, internally and then kind of externally. And then I do think there's probably a role for you all to be communicating, maybe with getting input from students, from staff, from, well, you know, staff, from the community around, hey, this is what we're starting to think about. What do you think? Those wrong shoulders are wrong.
Yeah, and that's exactly what I was trying to point out as far as what can we do to bolster like the fourth grader.
And this is a great example. I think it ties well with the middle school these two and just that they're looking at more tech in the middle school that opens population and expand that critical mass.
Yeah, I I could talk about this more, but we're already at eight, almost 30. So, all right. Resolutions is going to be quick because we aren't going to propose any, but I do want to let folks know that September 7th is the ESBA Resolution Training Date where they will be sharing out all of the resolutions as they have either presented or have come in from other boards. And it's an important one of their presentations to attend. So September 7th and the evening, perhaps? I don't know. But anyway, putting that on your.
Quick comment on the resolutions. I know we don't have any, we're moving on quickly, but I read the current resolutions, this, I don't know, from ESBA. There are like 100.
There are more.
And I feel like the last thing they needed more. And the only feedback they have is, you be having more resolutions, it's not removals or modifications of existing. So we have maybe an opportunity to have more of what channels can, I feel like, as we keep adding more, their attention gets diluted. Do's is spent, you know, just a little bit here and there, and maybe we could need to help bring them a little bit more focus.
Also loses the value. So, yeah, that's a good point. We will have an opportunity. Yep. Board calendar attached with more topics. You'll see some trainings added on there. A couple, there are a couple of Tuesdays for various reasons. Our first meeting is the 22nd of August. I have the wrong date. Oh, I have the wrong date here. Sorry. Yes, my first of August. I don't have the right one. Anyway, look at the calendar, put them in your schedule early. Let us know if you have a question. Good question.
I have a question. I was going to put something in my calendar, and I remembered that we also have a board leadership meeting scheduled for Juneteenth. And I wanted to just make sure that that was actually.
I will write it down and we'll figure it out.
School day and.
Yep.
Et cetera, et cetera. Just putting it out there.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Other business?
I've got one thing. Come and grab your book before he leaves.
Just looking after today and expressing some of my frustration with kind of how, and I'm guilty of this too. I know that I'll jump in and say, is that pertinent? I do think ongoing conversation about what is appropriate for board meeting conversation and when would be, you know, continue to be helpful. I'm very frustrated with the response that you gave to me about that conversation, especially looking at the finance and facilities charter that we just approved, which talked about reviewing and recommending capital facilities plans. So sure, maybe my starting place should have been with the principal or the assistant principal. It's not advertised clearly who the athletic director for the middle schools are. But I think broadly, the conversation, and you're jumping in, talking about a word and wordsmithing, I just, I want these conversations to be productive and positive. I felt shut down for most of this meeting because of the board's kind of response, because of another conversation. And I really want us to have great conversations. And I think we, we need to have that, it, yeah, it's broadcast and state, but we're all here for, I feel like, the right reasons. And to shut a conversation, I apologize when I've done it, because I know that I have. And I want to be better at that piece about recognizing, you know, sometimes stuff comes out. We're advocating maybe for ourselves, our families, our community, but we're intentionally looking at the broad scope, right? We're not here, I'm not representing my daughter, I'm not representing the girls softball team, I'm not representing adult education, I'm representing the district. And I think we have to trust in ourselves that if a conversation does divulge, and we had a little back and forth, or not divulge, but sort of divulge then, then it would be inappropriate. But I felt like it was right after I said it. And so just how we can build intentionality around our conversations might be part of that board development process that we keep talking about.
Other, other business?
You know, I I totally hear what you're saying, Ethan. And I think a frustration of mine over the course of the board has, my time on the board has been, you know, that we're focused on process as opposed to action. And I think we've taken some good progress with rewriting our policies, man, our policy group last, I think it was probably about exactly a year ago to this meeting. But we haven't seen those policies actually truly implemented in a way where we're, we're working strategically as a board, where we're thinking long term and vision, where we have a real purpose to come here because we have an agenda of things that we're trying to accomplish over the course of a year. I think that will make a huge, huge difference to us feeling like we don't have to talk about the process all the, all the way around, because we're going to have things that we're doing, and we're going to have focuses, folk high. And and we're going to have different ways to engage the community engagement committee and the different committees. So this is my last meeting as a board member. I'm stepping off the board. And my hope for the board is that we can really see the policy governance vision through going forward without me here. I do think that's going to help that so much more. We have to get there. And the challenge that I leave as a board member is challenging us all, you all to truly take a step into policy governance as we had envisioned it over the course of the last, I don't know how many years since we moved there. And since we kind of re-diterated and tried to make this this year, we are not there yet. I think that we are when we are a truly high functioning board in that way, the district will benefit. And until then, there's a missed opportunity. So I hope that we can get there soon. And I think that will help some of the tension that sometimes I also share. The buck going forward. So that's my, talking about your stuff.
Before I go, yeah, you will be missed. Your voice is valued. And I did skip the update on Jericho open board positions. Now we have two. We do have one, one person who has expressed interest. We need a second. And I believe the person who has expressed interest is going to join the board, but end of the school year is a really hard time to actually connect and make things happen. So sorry to pull you away, but yeah, you will be missed. And we've had this conversation a number of times, you and I have, so I just want to make. Somebody over there was trying to get my attention. Go ahead, Sarah. For other business?
Yes, my request, when we kick things off in August, is that we have the discussion about I think Kevin, it was used as decorum when we updated those PG decorum, when we updated the PG policies. Well, no, we removed it. Just if you're not going to attend a committee meeting, let the chair know or accept or decline the meeting invitation. Right? Like, and use your MMU email address. I think the only reminder sometimes, like, I know we've been in positions where I'm like, okay, is the forum going to show up? Are we going to have enough people? Can we have this discussion? I don't want to be in the space where like I have to text people to say, are you actually going to come today? I just, I think it'd be really professional of all of us to to be aware of that, accept, decline, or hey, I'm not going to be there today because of whatever.
Thank you. I'm making a note for the August 21st meeting. Thanks. Did you have your hand up?
Just want to thank Tom for your time on the board. It's been great to be able to be here and hopefully, you know, go away forever, come back around. I don't know if you've ever had a boomerang as a school board member, but I'm totally out of hope. If people want to take a little bit of time off, they do that, and then they realize what they missed and come back. So there'll always be a seat somewhere in the room for you.
What comments?
Any other, other?
Oh, at one point, given that we have two right seats open, what is a board forum?
I think it's still eight. But I will confirm that because you're asking things that my brain can't process.
Present, right? I mean, I don't know what this.
The seats are unfilled. We needed to make a decision.
We need a quorum to, but we need a quorum to even start a meeting. So what's that?
What's the majority of the board when two seats are vacant? It's still the makeup of the board.
Right.
Yeah.
I will find that out. A majority of folks that are here differ from a quorum of what it takes to.
There's 13, there's usually 15 board members, but there's only 13. Phil said seven would be the board. It would be less than what it would take for 15, I would think. I think so.
I'll check the law. We can debate it or we can skip. The last thing I want to say is I just want to congratulate the MMU girls tennis team with their Division II state championship. It's the first one in the school's history. It's their second time at the championships in the school's history. Last time was 1991, and they won 6-1 pretty decisively on Saturday. So just want to congratulate.
Yeah, I know that she's not here, but Kennedy's job or position, we're going to miss her too.
Yes. We did get to celebrate her at the Golden Apple Award, and I did think she was going to be here tonight, but unfortunately, she's not here. Yeah. So yeah, we will miss her also. And if you go to graduation, you can give her a hug and thank her in person when you go for graduation.
How do we get new student reps? They self nominee or?
It's such a complicated question. No, no, no. It's, there is, there's an opportunity for students to apply at the beginning of the school year. Normally, we just have juniors apply. Since we haven't had a junior member attend too many meetings, we could end up with two brand new members next year. I don't know how that's going to work. And then usually the member of the board, often the mentor, often the senior student rep and the principal of the high school interview for votes, and then together make a decision on who would be the class first. That is something that we had wanted to look into how that decision is made for a while, and those meetings have not yet happened. So we've had changes in who the student mentor was in that time, and it's just been a that's the quick overview. Any other, other business? Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Second. Thank you. Have a great night. We can try leaving. So and have some food.